Call our meeting to order. Welcome everyone. First up tonight is the approval of the agenda. If there's no need for amendment, I'll seek a motion for approval.
I move.
In a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Next up, we have three sets of minutes from our joint meeting with the Board of Education on February 6th, our budget retreat from February 18th, and then our regular meeting on February 18th. If there are no needs for any amendments to those minutes, I'll seek a motion for approval.
Totally.
In a second.
Slowly.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Moving on now to administrative reports. Starting to notice a big tick up in people around. So our summertime season's almost around the corner. I can't wait. Got a little bit of it in February, but then it turned cold again. So other than that, I have nothing to report. Any other commissioners have anything to report this evening? Move on to County Manager King and his report.
I'm gonna forego my report and do that during the work session. I think you have to speak on the projects.
Going on now to informal comments and Ms. Todd.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing me. I'm Vicki Todd. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here because I strongly oppose the proposed homeless shelter near Webster, and I urge the county commissioners to not defund it for that location as it is not only inappropriate, but potentially dangerous. Let's be clear, providing shelter for homeless is important, but it must be done responsibly, and the proposed location is fundamentally flawed for several reasons, and it will not serve the needs of the homeless individuals. First, this site is dangerously close to the highway with a 55 mile an hour speed limit. There are no sidewalks, and it has limited transit access. Imagine someone without reliable transportation trying to walk along that busy road to get essential services, find work, or even access a grocery store. It's a danger. It's a disaster waiting to happen. The lack of sidewalks and safe crossings increases the risk of accidents, and we all know how tragic those consequences can be. The traffic on that road will increase when a 107 project comes, and placing vulnerable individuals in a high-risk area like this is not just irresponsible, it is reckless. Second, this location is miles away from the critical mental and physical health services that many homeless individuals rely on. Without easy access to medical care, counseling, and rehabilitation services, how can we expect those individuals to get back on their feet? A shelter without proper support systems nearby is not a solution. We need to think about long-term success, not just short-term placement. Third, this proposal dismisses the concerns of the existing community, particularly those in the nearby mobile home park. Many of those residents own their own homes, and they take pride in that community. Yeah, their voices are being ignored simply because their homes are not stick-built. This is unacceptable. Every homeowner, regardless of the type of home they live in, deserves a say in what happens in their neighborhood. The dismissive attitude toward those residents is not only unfair, but disrespectful. A homeless shelter should be placed in a location that truly benefits those it serves, where they have safe access to transportation, medical care, and job opportunities. This proposed site meets none of those criteria. I urge the county commissioners to reject this location and find a more suitable site that actually sets people up for success. We can and must do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Todd. Would you like to be continued? Moving on now to new business and Ms. Fox with our capital project ordinance.
The capital project ordinance presented to you tonight is for the Jackson County Medical School project. The amount of the project is $60 million. The revenues will come from sales tax proceeds, and the NCDPI needs based grant, $52 million.
Um, any questions from the board regarding this, this project ordinance? Ms. Fox, you're, you're in charge of the, the, how do I describe this? The, you're the budget officer.
That's...
Correct.
Correct. The finance officer. You'll be available to the budget officer, which is Mr. King, and the finance officer.
Okay. And then do you want to move on to our capital improvement plan?
Um, I need to...
Or do you want to vote on this first?
Need to vote on this first.
Is there a motion to approve the capital budget or project ordinance?
I move.
In a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed.
Thank you.
And then moving on to the capital improvement plan.
Okay, the capital improvement plan is for the fiscal year 25 through 2029. This is what we discussed at the budget retreat. We have $92,122,400 for the Jackson County Public Schools, and we're anticipating our end $21 million in debt for those projects. There would be no property tax increase associated with those projects for the debt payments. It'll come from sales tax proceeds. We have Southwestern Community College. The amount of the total funding on it is $22,121,867. Also, the allotment from the county will be from the sales tax. Then we have the Jackson County projects we discussed. The total of those, $39,650,000. We're anticipating $29 million in debt for those. So the total package is $153,894,267, and we're anticipating debt of $50 million. That would be a 1.56 cent tax increase to cover the debt on these. And that's the total. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions from the board?
The housing projects, is that, is that what we were talking about?
That, that is for, we've already budgeted the $750,000 for current year, and we have to budget $750,000 for the project in Webster.
Sure.
Yeah, now complete it, and then we're anticipating putting $500,000 each year for additional projects as they come available. And that'll come out of, out of, out of ad blorant tax.
Is that the project out on, uh, near the nursing home?
Yes.
When's that gonna get started? Do we know?
We have a meeting in the morning.
They did get allotted $11 million from the HUD.
They did?
They did get that. So that'll be starting probably in the next six, eight months.
Yeah. And the money that we've appropriated is for infrastructure, so that'll be the first part of the project.
And this is, this is gonna be the senior living?
Yes.
Single-family homes and daycare?
Workforce.
Workforce.
The infrastructure, meaning water and sewer?
Water and sewer.
On the justice center addition?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, add an additional courtroom. Is that where we're gonna be sitting? Where we're sitting right now, is that where you're gonna be adding that? Additional courtroom, jail pod?
That'll be part of it.
Yeah.
The courtroom will be added next to the two that are currently existing, and then we're gonna be doing some remodeling in this area for the sheriff's office.
Additional.
New pod goes up.
Right, yeah. By the jail currently. And then there's some extra courtroom, like registered, not registered deeds, clerk of court, office would be enlarged, the judge's chambers would be, yeah. And then probate needs new offices as well. So reconfiguring everything up here and downstairs. So.
Back to the third page. What was that? Go back one page back.
So, yeah.
It's the SEC.
Yeah, Southwestern Community College. That renovates, that puts an expansion on the Oaks Hall building, 22,000 square feet. That'll centralize the library on that main campus and add additional classrooms. And also the Founder's Hall renovation, where they will have a new dental pro from there.
And on...
Fleets the, the master plan for SEC.
Right, I remember us talking about that. I think it's last year. Right?
Well, yeah.
I thought we approved it last year.
I did too.
Yeah.
Back to page four, I had one other question, I think. Home Canada Fire Department, have, did we get that grant from?
We're still waiting. No, it's, it's not, not worth it the budget cycle with the state yet, but we have asked for that, that one.
How much would the grant be if we got it?
We, we should know by May.
But how, how much would it be to knock off of this?
I hope, I hope it's our amount.
Okay.
We've notated here it's state directed grant.
Okay.
So you're, we're saying 14 and a half for the new building and 14 and a half for renovations.
Correct.
Any additional questions by the board? If not, I'll seek a motion for approval.
I move.
Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Moving on now to our legislation portion, which is the declaration of official intent to reimburse.
Okay, this is a resolution for the declaration of the official intent to reimburse. The maximum principal amount is $50 million, and this will allow us to officially reimburse ourselves with the proceeds when the parion happens.
Is there a motion to approve this official intent?
I move.
In a second. Madam Clark?
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Brossen?
Yes.
Commissioner Hooper?
Yes.
Chairman Litsen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on now to appointments. We've got one request from the Region A Aging Advising Council, and Sarah J. Melton, the director, has requested that we appoint, we appoint Mary Farick to serve a three-year term for that council. Is there a motion to approve Ms. Farick?
I move.
In a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Any questions from the press tonight?
I had one other question, real quick, Mr. Chair. On the renovation part, will that go into the sheriff's office budget? Will that be separate?
It'll be a capital project.
Yeah, project, okay. So we keep that separate. Okay.
Good deal. We do have a need for closed session tonight in our first meeting, and that'll be for legal and personnel. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move.
In a second.
I can.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Closed session, we do have one action that was taken. Justin Thomas is now our new IT Director. So congratulations, congratulations, Mr. Thomas, on your new position. Look forward to meeting soon. With no further business, is there a motion for adjournment?
I move.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. We are adjourned for six minutes.
We'll be back.
We'll be back, yeah.
Closed session, we do have one action that was taken. Justin Thomas is now our new IT Director. So, congratulations, congratulations, Mr. Thomas, on your new position. Look forward to meeting you soon. With no further business, is there a motion for adjournment?
I'm in.
And a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned for six minutes.
We'll be back.
We'll be back, yeah.
After the school resource officers have retired and gone on, or the kids have left school and graduated, they'll invite them to graduations, weddings, and carry on a friendship far beyond the school years. So the school resource officers are a valuable asset to us. The school resource officer is more than just a badge in the hallway. They're a trusted presence, a guiding voice, and a safety net for our students, always ready to listen and support. And I'm gonna give you some numbers of what these guys do. Two hundred and eighty events in addition to their regular operations. School resource officer will pull an eight-hour day, and then three thirty is their cutoff time. They will stay, they don't go home. They'll stay to five, and they don't get paid for that. They'll stay to five, and then they will work malt games in addition to that. And here's, it's not just one officer, this is multiple officers. So we're looking, with what we've had this year, four hundred and eighty extra hours, which is two additional events per school day, per officer. And some of these events have gotten so big, high school football games, that one malt game, we had eight officers there, another, we had ten, a couple of others, we had six, and no less than three. So there's a lot asked of these men and women. They sacrifice their family time. They sacrifice personal time in order to help at the schools and stuff. So if you see one of them, please, please tell them thank you for the job that they do. And I want to try to do as much for them as I can, because they are truly a valuable asset to us. Fraud and scam reports. These are, this is a constant, and this time of year is, we're seeing it ramp up just a little bit. Come tax time, the scams usually increase quite a bit, and you can see those numbers there. Where, they're on about average, twenty-two was a little more than others. Assaults and investigations. We see that number has increased in two thousand twenty-four. I could not tell you what the cause of that is, but we have answered a lot of domestic type calls and some serious assault calls this year. So hopefully that will go down this coming year. Major crimes. Forensic interviews, we've done eighty-nine. ICAT cases, we've done twenty of those, and this is for the child places, that internet crimes against children cases. Two thousand twenty-four, we had a number of drone flights, we deployed five times, and of those five times we deployed, we had three arrests come from those deployments. And we have already deployed the drones in twenty-five, probably three or four times. So they are, they're invaluable. If we have a missing persons case, and we're going out looking, the drones get deployed immediately to try to, to track the person if we can. We have thermal capability, infrared, and spotlight capabilities. So we deploy those and get those up in there as quick as we can. Civil process and court services. This is Sea Beach Willhouse, so I should probably get him up here. Two thousand twenty-two, fifteen hundred and seven civil processes that went up seventeen hundred in twenty-three. It is sixteen hundred and twenty-seven as of twenty-four. Part of the reason for that is the new system that the clerk's office has now. Some of those are, the service is mailed out, so we don't get those services in-house now. Courthouse visitors. This is a little skewed. I'm going to tell you, for twenty-four, twenty-two, you say it's forty-two thousand, twenty-three, thirty-five, five-five-six. This year, nine, nineteen thousand eight hundred and six, the counter is broke. So we'll have to replace the counter. We looked at January and February. In January, there was almost six thousand people that visits, over two hundred and seventy people per day. February, there was ten thousand and something, it's like five hundred and seventy-one per day coming in and out of the courthouse. So a lot of traffic, and the guys up front are, I call it the TSA, it's courthouse security, but they scan a lot of bags and stuff. So we're looking at changing some stuff up front there. Bags have been a big issue for us, so we're looking at maybe trying to change that and do away with any big bags, only small bags come through. So it takes a lot less out of the scan portion of that. Community outreach. We do a lot of community outreach. Safe Schools Task Force, Captain Tony Cope, he had presented that to me, and he's headed that up, spearheaded that. We've been doing that now for a little over a year now, isn't it? And he is, he's got that on track, working with schools and all the different agencies that we work with. It's a great thing, getting that narrowed down, where the response time and everything will be more concentrated, and everybody'll know what's going on. Dispatch played a huge role in this, so we're excited about that. The DARE program. Sergeant Hollifield, he continues to do the DARE program, and he's added an additional school this year to the DARE program. So he stays quite busy, and just whittling out time for these DARE programs is a task in itself, because the schools have so much going on. So he works hard at that. Senior Center Christmas Box Delivery. We enjoy this every year. We get the chance to do this. It's a blessing for us to get to go out and visit with these folks. Some of them are shut in, don't get to get out much, or limited in getting out. So it blesses our heart to do that during Christmas. So we're thankful for the Senior Center for allowing us to help do that. Special Olympics. Another, another program that we thoroughly enjoy, and two of our officers, Captain Tiffany Paul and Sergeant Christie Sims are heading up a T-shirt sale for Special Olympics this year, and our goal is to reach ten thousand dollars. So if anybody is interested in those T-shirts, we have those, they're twenty-five dollars a piece. Once we reach the goal of seven thousand, I believe, they'll put our badge on the back of that shirt, and that's reading for the ten thousand dollar goal. We want, we want to help these children as much as we can. It's a great program, and we enjoy attending that every year. Back to school bash. We do that every year. It's good to see that number of kids come out. We'll be doing it again this year. Emergency Services Committee, something that we sit on quarterly, and it's, it's a good time for all that's there. We learn a lot from each other, what's going on with each agency, and we share that information, and something that may cross over to another agency, we work those things out. DWI Task Force, it's been something that we've been doing since I took office, and it's a great program. They've got some legislation that they're trying to push through, wanting to go to point zero five. It's been a long time since the point zero eight was enacted, and I would love to see a point zero five come to North Carolina, make our roadway safer. And shop at the top. That's, that is so much fun. It's a blast. I encourage you to come out, if you don't get to come out and be with us during that, but the kids love it. We have, we have a great time with that. Narcotics Enforcement. This is, this is near and dear to my heart right here. And this is our seizure that's on here. This was Officer Gunner that took this seizure in. One of the narcotics investigators, he's assigned to the DEA Task Force as a TFO. What that allows us to do, it allows us to cross over with state cases into the federal cases on the DEA side, allows us, allows us to seize funds and equipment stuff through the federal system. We also have an additional narcotics investigator assigned to the alcohol, tobacco, and firearms. Explosives Task Force is a TFO, same thing there, if we're dealing with guns or drugs, it allows us to seamlessly cross over to the federal side of that. Two thousand twenty-four, we had eleven hundred and seventy-six charges. There are all of those felonies, drug arrest totals, four hundred and ten. That's just on our narcotics Crack cocaine, we seize two hundred and thirty-one point zero nine zero grams. Cocaine, two hundred and thirty-eight point zero eight zero grams. Fentanyl and heroin, seven hundred and ninety point six zero zero grams. Methamphetamine, two thousand eight hundred and thirty-two point seven six two grams. This is just in twenty twenty-four. And I can tell you, there's a lot more to come. We're not done yet. We are, we're aggressive with our, with our drug enforcement. We'll continue to be aggressive with it, because we are a corridor, we're sitting right into corridor seventy-four, forty, forty-one, and there's a lot comes through here. So we're constantly trying to train these guys, learn them how to spot it quicker, how to get this stuff off the streets before it makes it into the hands of the dealers here, and makes it to the individual users. So we've made quite a bit of difference. Any that you can take off, and it doesn't matter if it's making county, swing county, transfer. I mean, whoever's taking it off the streets, it makes the streets safer for all of us, and in joining counties too. Criminal Suppression Unit. This is one of our new canines here. This is Aries. Aries is a top-notch dog. Our Criminal Suppression Unit comprises two canines that assist our two narcotics investigators with surveillance and enforcement. Canine deployments, two thousand twenty-three, we had thirty-four. Two thousand twenty-four, that total's gone up to a hundred and thirty. And we'll be adding a dog, another canine to our staff here in next little bit. We've got a handler picked out, and they'll be going for training. It'll be about six weeks of training, and we look forward to this number going up even more. Canine arrests, two thousand, two thousand twenty-three is thirteen, and twenty-four is sixty-five. And that's just off our canines. Opioidosis. These are kind of shocking at first. Two thousand twenty-two, that's when I took office, there were a hundred and eighty-nine overdoses.
Excuse me, what, is an overdose, is it a death in overdose, or just an overdose?
Well, of this hundred and eighty-nine overdoses, there were sixty of those that were deaths. Okay. Two thousand twenty-three, we had ramped up our drug enforcement, hundred and fifty-six overdoses, thirty, thirty-eight deaths. Two thousand twenty-four, ninety-nine overdoses, five deaths. Some of these overdoses, they're not all fentanyl-based, or methamphetamine, or cocaine-based. Some of these are gonna be accidental overdoses. It may be an elder adult that's taken too much medication or whatnot, but all of those are included in this. So they... Since we will never arrest our way out of this crisis, we must have help from our court system. And, and, and example given, be stiffer consequences, longer mandatory sentences in the drug court. So we need, we need help. We can, we can arrest them all day, and we will, and we'll continue. If they get released, get back out on the street, and do the same thing again, we'll arrest them again. But we've got to help, have to have the help from our court system. Detention Center capacity. I know there's some questions about the detention center, about the addition or whatnot. I'll explain that to you, why it's important. Since I took office, well, since this detention facility was built here, is over twenty years old, and it's never been added to. When, when it was first built, the capacity for females was only eight, and that has changed drastically. We have seventy-two total beds, fifty-nine of those are male beds, eight are female beds, five of those are holding beds. The state only recognizes the holding beds, so that is, reduces us to a sixty-seven-bed occupancy facility. And whenever we're talking to occupancy, some of these individuals, if they're a violent individual that we have problems with or whatnot, they may occupy one cell, which would be a cell that would house two, but because they're violent, or out of control or something, we will only have one in there. So that reduces our numbers and our holding capacity there. We try to get the courts to move people out as quick as we can. Some of these folks would probably stay longer if we had the capacity for that. But right now, we don't have the capacity for that. And if you ask me the number of beds we need for the next, to move us up for the next twenty years, I'd say forty Detention Centers statistics here. Two thousand twenty-four detention center admissions, you can see twenty-three was twenty-one eighty-nine, twenty-four is two thousand thirty-two. So just a little bit of a reduction there. Average daily population, though, sixty-two in twenty-three, sixty-nine in twenty-four. Currently, we have, we had, this morning, we had eighty in-house. We had prisoners sleeping on the floor. We've got prisoners in Transylvania County, we have Henderson County, and the cost of that per month is, with five in Henderson County, the cost of that per month is probably in excess of ten thousand.
How many, how many more beds than it was probably stated, and I missed it, will the new center have?
Well, for ever, for every eight beds, you have to have a bathroom and a shower. So it'll depend on the size of that footprint, of what they can put in there. And I don't know if there's been any changes to the pod systems that they're making now. I haven't, I haven't got to that point yet. Individuals, I'm sorry?
You have another county?
Right now, I know we have five in Henderson County. I'm not exactly sure of the number in Transylvania County, because I don't know if they shipped any more there today or not.
You said ten thousand dollars. Is that just for the total stay, or is that?
That's, that's per month. Yeah.
So paying these other people to house them for us, and then the transportation doing for them?
Yes, yes. And we have to go pick them up for court, bring them back, and if their courts continue, then we take them back. And I'll show you the transports here in just a moment, to give you an idea of where we're at there.
How many total prisoners do you have right now?
This morning, we had, this morning, we had in-house eighty. So we probably had about ninety prisoners total, I'd say.
About ten out of county.
I'm estimating, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I know there's five in Henderson County. Transylvania County, I didn't get the number on that, so. I mean, we can, we, if I had the bed space.
Ten thousand dollars right there in a month. How long is these people?
I've got, I've got prisoners in-house right now. It's been there, one has been there almost four years. I've got a couple that's been there almost three years. I've got a couple more that's been there almost two years, and a couple, two or three others that's been there for a year. So we're housing people longer. But like I said, we're gonna have to have help from the courts. We're gonna need more court dates, because we had court, this past week, we won't have criminal court again for three weeks.
Four years is because of the court, they can't convict them, or?
It's just, it's just backlog.
They can stay there for you.
Oh, they're that backlog?
Yeah, they're back, backlog. Some of these are, some of these are capital offenses that takes a while to get in order, and some are just in-depth cases. Some of them, we have a laundry list of charges on, and I couldn't tell you all the reasons for them, the delay. We try to push those, well, I have, I probably didn't tell you, we have two in DOC as well in safekeeping, one of which is an escape risk. So every time we move that inmate, we have to use four officers, because he's such a, such an escape and a violent person. So we use four officers with that. I can't give you the details of how we use those four officers, because it didn't, for security protocols, but we have to use four officers just because of that security risk with him.
Can you use a van to transport?
We, we have ordered a new van. It's, it's being built. It's not made it back to us yet. We have the old van, but this gentleman we're talking about, he is, I can't go into detail, but it's, it's definitely, it's one of the highest security risks we've had in Jackson County Jail in a long time. So. Individuals with single booking, eighteen hundred and twenty-nine in twenty-three, sixteen hundred and sixty-six in twenty-four. Multiple bookings, about the same, three hundred and sixty-three, three hundred and sixty-six. Percentage of county population booked through the Jackson County Detention Center, four, nine in twenty-three, four, five in twenty-four. The recidivism rate has rose about three percent. Excuse me. Number of people with felony offenses that we booked in, twenty-three, seventeen hundred and seventy-eight, twenty-four, twenty, two thousand and forty-two. This next one, that is an error, I should say misdemeanor offenses. So twenty-nine, forty-six in twenty-three, and three thousand and ninety-five in twenty-four. And other offense types, we have those numbers there. Two thousand and twenty-four population not yet released from the US Census, population based on projected growth, of forty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-six Jackson County residents. Two thousand and twenty-three population, based on the US Census, was forty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-four Jackson County residents. Involved whole commitment, obviously, and inmate transport. So this is, this is part of that. The total transports, five hundred and eleven in twenty-three, six hundred and seventy-five in twenty-four. So Bubbs down here, he, he does a lot of road time.
You got a new van?
We got, we got a new van coming, yes, yes.
Is that what he drives, that's what he transports?
No, he, he's got a cage vehicle, and he transports like individuals, one at a time. The van will do multiples, or the, the security risk inmate, we'll put him in that van whenever we get it, so.
And when he transports somebody, is it just, is it just him, or another?
Usually just him. If it's a female, we'll have a female officer, or if we don't have a female available, we will do doubles, we'll put two, two officers in that vehicle.
How's his vehicle for transportation? How far does he have to transport?
He'll transport from here to the coast sometimes.
Is his vehicle up to date for many times?
He's got high mileage on his vehicle. His vehicle, he'll mileage one out in three years. So we've got another vehicle in, in store for him here in just a next little bit that we're gonna rotate him out to, that will be lower mileage to run him for a while. IVC transports, hundred and sixty-nine, twenty-three, two sixteen, and twenty-four. Immate transports, three forty-two, and then four fifty-nine in twenty-four. You can see the time spent on transports, twenty-one ninety-five in twenty-three, twenty-four eighty-three in twenty-four. So, and that's not just Bubbs and Steve there, that's jail staff as well, and then officers that are off that come in to do transports of prisoners or IVCs. Time spent transporting IVCs, five hundred and seventy-four hours, six hundred and eighty-six in twenty, twenty-four. Time for inmates, sixteen hundred and twenty-one hours in twenty-three, seventeen hundred and ninety-seven, twenty-four. So a lot of time on the road. And we would like to thank you all for the continued support for Jackson County Sheriff's Office. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. One more question, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
On the VIVITROL program, what were we at on that?
We have settled on a peer support group. We got quotes from two. We're waiting on the one to get us the rest of the proposal, so that we can move forward with that. We've got the, for shots outside the facility, we have that set up now. EMS will be partnering with us and giving those shots for us in Nocostin County, which, so I want to give them a big shout-out, Christian and Matthew Burl and Toby, for agreeing to do that. The peer support has been our biggest hurdle force in trying to get that. You know, we've got, we've, we've had, we've struggled with that, but we've got two grants for the county. The first one was almost five hundred thousand. The second one, we got, we were one of thirty agencies out of the US to receive that grant, and it was almost a million dollars. So between those two grants, that will give us new funds to effectively treat a hundred and eighty inmates with the VIVITROL. It's six shots, so it'd be six months. But the peer support part of that, once they, once they leave, go outside the facility, and they continue their program, the peer support can go on and on. It just depends on how long they need your peer support. But that peer support is crucial, because if you go out and you don't have the life skills, or the support you need, or the right to get, to get your next shot, that's, that's a big hurdle for the inmate, or, or the individual that's out there, trying to get their life back in, on track. That's what we want, we want to be able to give them that chance to get their life back on track, and let them see what it's like to be clear-headed and know that they don't have to depend on a drug to get through the day. So we're excited about that.
Continued financial support from the state, or other grants that you're seeing coming through?
The state does offer a maintenance, well, they did in twenty-three, they offered a maintenance grant, but we just got that other grant, so we didn't qualify for that. I don't know if they'll offer that again in twenty-five. That's just, we'll have to wait and see.
How long do you think that, you said a hundred and eighty, is that right? How long do you think?
Hundred and eighty.
We said you have a hundred, or ninety right now, but all those probably won't accept to do it, and all those are not.
No, no, it's strictly, it's a volunteer program. And if they volunteer and they sign up for it, we'll, we'll work with them. And we could even offer, even if they don't want to sign up for that program, if they want to get hooked up with peer support, we'll give them the information, and they can get to go to peer support once they get out.
There's even, like, after they leave your care.
Yes.
Enter into peer support, you know, it may be that VIVITROL isn't the correct drug for them, they find another way of, of filling that void through peer support with another sponsor.
Right, right. And, and I, and I'll be the first to tell you, I'm not a fan of methadone box-in treatment. And the reason, and I don't want to trade one drug for another drug. The VIVITROL is non-narcotic, it's six shots, it's, it's expensive, and I, I understand it's expensive, but Wilkes County and the other counties that are doing this have had such great success. I think Wilkes County, when I talked to them, they had like a three percent that had, that had went back and used again. But they give them that opportunity to come back and get back on the program. So I just, I want, I want to see them be able to get clear-headed to where they, they understand, I don't need that drug to get me through the day, I can do this on my own. And I want to give them the tools to do that.
How long do you think it'll take you to get this weapon started?
We're waiting on the rest of the proposal, and as soon as that comes in, I'm ready. When I can get the first shot, you'll hear me. I'm excited for, I'm excited for the inmate population to be able to have that available to them, because it's, it's, it's been a long road.
The next thing they need after they get the shot is a job or two, as part of peer support.
Yes, it is.
Things we can do with that, with our opioid settlement funds, and sort of help to supplement those areas.
Yes. And, I mean, it's, 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 it's been a road, and it's been hard, but it's worth it. If, if we change one life, I mean, it's, it's worth every, every, every bit of it, so.
Opioid money, I think, if it's a success, didn't we talk about that at one time, using some of those funds to continue the program on, I think, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I know Wilkes County, they've had five hundred and seventy-six contacts with individuals for the VIVITROL, so.
Is it open to others than inmates, or is it just inmates at this time? Like, if someone?
You mean outside the facility?
Population?
We wouldn't be able to offer that to them now, if it was, if the peer support, if they were to get their own drug stuff, I mean, they would be able to do that. And I think they're, they're available, I mean, these grants are available, I think, for mental health groups that can get those and offer that. So I would love to see that. I mean, where they could walk in, have a walk-in clinic, get VIVITROL shot, or get something to help them, because it's, we're, we're trying, we're trying our best. And, and I know law enforcement can do so much, but we've got to have help.
I want to thank you on the overdoses. That's... Thank you on the overdoses, uh, that's big. And we've seen it, you know, I mean, in my job, we've seen it.
Yeah, well, and EMS.
Seeing those families lose a loved one, you know, food overdose, it's sad to see, so.
Yeah.
We, we appreciate, I appreciate you.
Yeah.
Thanks for that.
Well, I, I tell you, bro, I, it's, I'd, I'd give the praise to the men and women that's working around me, uh, because they're the ones doing, I mean, I try to be there and get the tools that they need, uh, but they're doing the work. Uh, so whenever I say I, I appreciate my staff, I, I thoroughly appreciate my staff, uh, because I couldn't do it without them. And, and definitely can't do it without the public's help, so, um, so I'm grateful. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. And next we have, um, project updates with Mr. King.
So just wanted to bring it speed on, um, all the projects and then kind of dive into a couple of them that we need to make decisions on at this point, so. Uh, first one, Center for Domestic Peace, uh, they are gonna be, are having problems getting some subs, so they will be a little bit late, uh, their, their initial date was five twenty-five, twenty-five, and, uh, right now it's projecting out at, uh, seven thirty-one of twenty-twenty-five, so. We have, um, through Clark Nixon, our architects, we are trying to work with them to come up with a resolution on, you know, a timeline, a specific timeline that, that we can kind of speed it up. And I think what's happened is they've just had all the trades come at the same time, and it's, that's the problem, that you can't, can't do that, so. Anyway, we're working with them on that. Um, the Clashers, uh, Glenville Recreation Area, uh, the park, we, we kind of segmented this out, so I gave y'all handouts, these two. Um, basically, the, the number one, which is the, the colored version, had a splash area in it, and so we looked at that. The new one, and this is just a, uh, very first diagram, we want to make sure y'all are, are all right with it moving forward before we're going to fully design it. This takes out this place, cleared area, and puts in additional pickleball courts, um, and some additional amenities, the small amenities, which should bring us back in within the budget parameters that we have. So just making sure y'all are happy with that, and then if, if you are, we will proceed on with the getting them during the final drawings, uh, to make that happen. They had to shift around a lot of different stuff to make it, to make it fit on the spot, so.
And you said pickleball is pretty popular up there.
Yeah, it is.
What are you doing here? Mark Watson, yeah.
Yeah. I, you know.
I'm not happy with it. For the, just for the reason of, from what I hear from everybody, I'm gonna get a lot of phone calls saying, we don't need another basketball court.
My fault.
Nobody's playing tennis much, pickleball courts would be welcome, but there's playgrounds right across the road, you know what they want, and so.
I, I think that we could get rid of the basketball court and add a skate park, kind of like we're doing with some of Cullowhee. Um, I just don't, I, I'm, I'm with Commissioner Jennings, I just don't see us really needing that basketball court. I, I think tennis can make a, I mean, I just don't.
They can play pickleball on the tennis courts.
Yeah, yeah, we can always put the tent partitions out there for a couple of them. But with the volume that goes through that, that facility being higher than the volume that goes through Cullowhee, and there not being a pool there, they're gonna, they will be complaining.
Okay. You mentioned skate park instead of basketball.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that would be an alternative for something, um, that we're now offering, we're, we're planning to offer in Cullowhee that Cacher doesn't get as well, so.
So the pool's out, the, the idea of a pool?
Right now, I don't, I mean, that's to say where we could put it.
Yeah, I think going through this design process, and it's been going on a couple of years now, um, the reason the pool was taken out originally, and I know it wasn't, the, the facilities weren't adequate, but the, the average, um, people utilizing the pool was on like six a day, was, but, but it was what it is. Yes.
It's an outdoor pool.
Yeah.
My daughter learned to swim in that pool and she was blue, and she'd get out of it.
So I mean, that, but it's not, you're apples to apples if you have.
That rec shit, or there's more people through that room?
Yep.
Per day?
Than the Cullowhee?
Than the Cullowhee, wow. I didn't know that.
Yeah, we see more people, more volume up there than Cullowhee.
Well, they have more free time.
Most of them are firemen and EMS and, you know. It needs, that facility needs, beyond this, that facility needs to be looked at, because just the workout facility is a third the size of what's at Cullowhee.
Right.
And people are stepping on each other, trying to lift weights, um, but.
I mean, if people's gonna be unhappy about it, that, a lot of people, then is there no way to redo this to where we could get a pool?
They'd rather have a pool with everything on that list, plus some. I mean, you'd be, even if it was an outdoor.
Yeah, I just, I don't think it was a part of the original scope, but definitely we can, we can look at it and see if we can.
Well, I mean, we're here to please the people and do what the majority wants, so that's what the majority wants. Michael and Mark, I don't know the pulse of the people up there.
I hear it. Maybe not every day, but really close.
I'd, I'd like to hear. Yeah, um, I'd like to maybe get Parks and Rec's kind of input, because I know staffing was an issue at one point. Um, just like it is everywhere, but, you know, uh, why are we taking an amenity away and replacing it with something that, I mean, is it needed of, yeah, but, I mean, can we, we've been managing with what we have for a while and, and Highlands has reduced or removed a lot of their, uh, um, access for Cacher's residents, so.
Well, I'll get, we'll get Michael to come in and, and talk again, we'll come up with maybe a new scope and work it from that angle, I don't know what, I don't know what went into feasibility.
Or the last terrarium over there, or, which makes it better in the summertime.
That's what Highlands has.
Yeah. Highlands has, yeah, Highlands has that.
And there's a couple, uh, campgrounds and hotels down in Cherokee that have the same thing, so then it makes it four-season.
I'll get him to come back, we'll, we'll have another discussion about it when we move forward, so.
Thank you.
Uh, the Whittier Park is on task, uh, to start in this month. Um, the Department of AG, we are almost ready to bid that project, and that is, um, just basically redoing all of the columns in front, we've got some issues there. Uh, Canada Fire Department, we're going to have to go out for a new rebid on that one, and it'll be a design, uh, design construction bids, we'll be picking the contractor beforehand. We did not make it a part of the entire package for our C Mar, uh, because of the size of the project, at three point nine million, it really needed to be a design bid concept, so we're gonna go back out for that. Um, the Justice Center Admin Building and the other ones on the list, which are all the, most of the school projects. Um, we did have a kickoff meeting, uh, yesterday with Vanoy, uh, with Pinnacle, Odell Thompson, um, Regional Macarass, so all of them are here, um, we sat down and kind of went over kind of a, a generalized schedule, so we're gonna take each piece separately. Um, right now we're engaged in a lot of different, all these different projects, on like topographical surveys, geological surveys, just looking at, um, getting all the information we need to make an informed decision on moving forward, so. Uh, all of these are moving forward at kind of the same pace, um, and in the background, we're working on the, the financial piece of it and trying to get all that ready with the, for the LGC. Uh, the outlier is, of course, the, the fairgrounds, which that, that one is moving, um, the building is, is about ninety percent down, and we're working, uh, looking at doing footings, uh, in the next couple of weeks, starting that process. The building has been ordered and will be on, will be delivered in a couple of weeks, um, we're waiting the footings, so we're, we're moving up for that. The only problem with that is working out the details on the sprinkler systems, um, and everything else should be, should be pretty simple after that process. Um, the Greenway Project, right now we're just, we're just tidying up the, the properties we have and then kind of coming up with a plan during the budget process for that, for next year, so. At this point, that's all I've got, um. Do I have any questions?
Sir? You want to go? We got you on this, first it was Fox, uh, made announcement, Mr. King made.
So, yeah, the next one is, um, so with that one, so not the first building that we're building, the fairgrounds, but the second, forty-eight thousand square foot open air pavilion, uh, we are asking, we'll be asking the Tobacco Trust for funding for that. Uh, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars is there, is what we're asking, and that's a combination of a lot of different things, but the whole facility, just that one pavilion, is about one point two million, um, and so they'll be bringing in a lot of that, and so, uh, anyway, I, the reason it's on the agenda is I need the board to, uh, pass a, just a letter, basically a support letter saying that, that y'all were in full agreement with the fairground as far as, uh, the development of it and how the sequence of events, you know, first event center, second one is the pavilion, so, that, that's basically what the letter, letter states, and, and the chair would be signing that, but if you can just, you know, acknowledge, yeah, good to go, that's what.
Get a grant, save seven hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, so.
We like, right? Saving money.
Moving on to the opioid planning update.
Yep, and this one, we've got some, uh, health department personnel here, they're gonna go over our opioid planning process that we've been involved in, so.
Good evening.
Hi, thank y'all for having us this evening, just to share an update on the opioid planning that we've been working on and what's been happening within the county, so. I'm Megan Kegel, I'm Health Education Supervisor with the Jackson County Department of Public Health.
And I'm Jody Ridwald, I am the Substance Use Prevention Coordinator with the Public Health Department.
And you do have a copy of our.
Yeah, we didn't realize we needed to get it to you ahead of time, so, but we did make copies for everybody. So you have a copy of the, the presentation that we're gonna go through, and then you also have a copy of the Region A Plan. Um, so many of you may be aware of the National Opioid Settlements, these were negotiated by then Attorney General Josh Stein and others. These agreements resolve litigation over the role of companies in creating and fueling the opioid epidemic and require significant industry changes that will prevent this type of crisis from ever happening again. The funding is coming down in two waves, um, the funds will be used to support treatment, recovery, harm reduction, and other life-saving programs and services in communities throughout the state. Um, eighty-five percent of the funding, um, was given to local governments, that is a hundred counties in North Carolina, plus seventeen municipalities. Um, fifteen percent went to the state, and the General Assembly would decide how to spend that. And I'll talk a little bit about the memorandum of agreement, and, uh, um, that, there is a memorandum of agreement between, um, the state and local governments, and that directs how the funds, um, is, are supposed to be distributed, used, and reported.
So the regional strategic plan was completed for County's Haywood West, which is the Region A, and through, that was completed through funding that was received through the Dogwood Health Foundation and a collaborative effort between Southwestern Commission and Tis Ten Biz Incorporated. Um, and then we also had Omni Institute that helped facilitate the completion of the needs assessment and help with the planning process. And that whole process began in July of twenty-twenty-three, and it was completed in August of twenty-twenty-four, so that's the plan that you have, um, available to look at. Um, some of the overarching themes from that plan was collaboration and combating stigma. And collaboration was emphasized as a regional strength and also as a high priority. So we're gonna look at more of county-specific information now.
Um, on the next page, um, it goes over the, the money, um, the funding, um, it can also be found on the NCopioidsettlement.org website. Um, so six million, a hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two will be given to Jackson County over eighteen years, starting in twenty-twenty-two, going through twenty-thirty-eight. Um, the county has received one million, eight hundred and twenty thousand so far. Um, this fiscal year, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, as of July first, we will receive four hundred and ninety thousand. Um, each year is, there's a little bit, um, difference in amounts, it's front-loaded to get programs started, and then as the years progress, um, the funding goes down a little bit, none of the funding has been spent, um, so far. This is a really great opportunity for our county to make an impact on the opioid crisis, and we want to be really good stewards of the funds.
How do people find out about these, what's available to them?
As far as the, the money?
But no, the projects.
The projects?
That's kind of what.
Yeah.
Over this part of the planning process to get them.
Yeah, because that's okay, because there's, it, the memorandum of agreement outlines specific things that, um, projects that we can, um, do. Um, we're looking at funding three years at a time and reviewing yearly.
So we included a timeline of the county planning process and kind of where we're at in that process, um, and how we've built off of the Region A, uh, plan that's been in place. So the plans have included input from local stakeholders and community members, and we continue to work very closely with Tanya Snyder, who's with Ten Biz Incorporated. Jody's been able to build off the strengths that were identified in that regional planning process, and then she's started, um, a local settlement council. The council began in December of twenty-twenty-four, and they've met three times so far. They've worked together to create a vision statement and also started a process for request for proposals for this funding. Um, the steering committee is currently being formed. That committee will be responsible for reviewing these proposals that are submitted and then helping to make recommendations of how we should spend that money. We would invite any of you to be a part of that steering committee if you're interested in being a part of that plan. Um, so the projects do have to meet specific criteria, um, and they also have to meet part of the approved Exhibit A strategies. So we would like to ask Commission to continue the planning development, review proposals from Jackson County organizations, and to offer recommendations for funding to this group.
Um, the next, um, page goes over six strategies, there are actually twelve in Exhibit A, um, that's the memorandum of agreement, um, and these impact strategies address prevention, treatment, and recovery. We're looking at six of those strategies, and they were chosen as a result of the Region A strategic plan, so that's how these, we came to look at just these six. Um, so collaborative strategic planning, evidence-based addiction treatment, recovery support services, post-overdose response, early intervention, and the lock zone distribution. And if anybody has questions on any of those, I'd be happy to explain them further.
And we also just wanted to highlight, um, the different groups and organizations that have been a part of this planning process, so we did include, um, those groups and members as well.
And then the next page, just, um, I have made a list of all of the, the individuals that have been a part of our, um, planning work group. So these individuals have attended from one to three of our meetings and have been, uh, part of that process, just so you can see who, who we've involved and invited.
Through large and small group discussions during our planning work sessions, the shared vision statement, um, was created, and this vision is for positive change, um, and it does include both population level and service system components. And that vision statement is to foster a healthier, stronger community by investing opioid settlement funds in initiatives that promote recovery, prevention, and support for individuals and families affected by opioid use. Prevention and support for individuals and families affected by opioid use. We aim to empower individuals and strengthen support systems through collaboration, transparency and compassion. Driving positive change that uplifts our community and creates a future where everyone can thrive in a safe, resilient and opportunity-filled environment.
Um, the next page, I'll go over just a little bit of data, um, so these are key indicators, um. These are population level trends that we're gonna be monitoring over time, um, so we're gonna be looking at overdose deaths, overdose. Um, emergency department visits, illicit drug overdoses and prescription opioid, um, distribution. Um, so the overdose in the next slide just has a a few, um, charts on there, the overdose death rate in Jackson County was. Forty-seven point one out of a hundred thousand residents in twenty twenty-three. Representing twenty-one people who died in a of an overdose, this rate is among the highest rate seen in North Carolina. The emergency department rate in Jackson County was seventy-eight point five for a hundred thousand residents in twenty twenty-four. Representing thirty-five emergency department visits for an overdose, and this is among the low rates seen in North Carolina. So the county and the region's rate of overdose deaths has typically been higher than the state's rate. While emergency department visits due to a drug overdose has been lower. So it highlights a potential gap in access to emergency care in the county. Related to overdose.
So we plan to use those key indicator data points to help prioritize projects that may receive our funding. Um, we would like to sustain what's already working and in place within the county. Expand on existing services, potentially add some new services that are addressing these priority gaps. In work terms, small barriers that have the potential to make a large impact within the community.
So this is like a planning thing for overdoses?
So this is, yeah, so the, so the plan that you have that we gave you, that was for Region A, so it's all the the seven counties west. Um, and so they all got together and made a regional plan. And then the counties decided that the regional plan may not work if everybody's working together, so the individual counties. Took that plan to their own counties and each, um, are working through through their county plan.
That's fits our county.
Yeah, yeah.
So none of this has been implemented?
No, we've just been in the planning process.
And how long has that been going on?
Um, so it started in twenty twenty-two.
The regional planning, yes.
Yeah, the regional planning started in twenty-two.
The big plan.
Yeah, Jackson County, we started in twenty-four, that's when the regional plan. Kind of highlighted an a need for somebody in a position to kind of lead it, and so that's where my position came from. And so, um, that's what I've been working on since October.
This past October? So when are we gonna see some results?
Well, that's that's what we're here, yeah, so we've put out, the next page talks about the request for proposal, we have put that out. As of, um, February twentieth, and we're gonna have it open until March twentieth, um, and so, um. We're we're accepting proposals from nonprofit organizations, government agencies, hospital systems and networks. Behavioral and mental health providers and private and public educational institutions. Um, we're gonna give priority to Jackson County organizations, um, we're not considering any duplication of existing services. Um, we're looking for, um, the organization's proven track record of providing effective services in Jackson County. Um, we're looking for potential impact, cost benefits, financial stability plan. And alignment of the proposal with, um, the county's defined funding priorities. Um, once, so that we're putting together a committee that will review these, we're gonna be reviewing them. Um, five different categories, giving them, um, a score from zero to five, each category is weighted. And so that will kind of help us to to kind of determine, um, if these projects are viable or not viable, um, and if they they fit under the M O A. Um, and then once organizations are selected, um, we will be looking at budgets, yeah.
What's the chances you could incorporate the treatment that Sheriff was talking about in with this?
Issues with that, I would, I would think because his is grant-based. So that we can't mix the funds, now there may be some crossover in terms of your sport.
Yeah, there could, there could be a potential for them to apply.
The main thing that helps these people is the support. And and more of a hands-on. Type of thing. And jobs, 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 the idle mind is the devil's playground.
I thought at one time we talked about using some of those opioid funds to. When Sheriff, the sheriff first brought that up, uh, to us, I thought at one time we talked about using some of the opioid funds to keep that program. Was that, didn't we, Sheriff?
Yes, you did, you did, and, uh, that's before I got that other grant. And both those grants that, uh, that we've bought more got are non-matching grants, so the county doesn't have to match anything. Uh, we have, we've got communities we have to be with every month.
So once those grants are run out, then can this money be used to?
It's possible, yeah.
Continue that program on?
Yeah, cuz we're gonna look at funding programs right now for three years at a time, and so then, you know, hopefully. That there, we wanna look for sustainability for those programs.
Now that don't mean stop looking for grants.
No, it doesn't, exactly, and there are a lot of grants out there for sure, yeah, but we did sit down and we met with Sheriff Farmer. Um, in December to kind of talk through the some of this stuff too, um, just to see where we could help with that. But right now, I think they're gonna work through the grants and then we'll kind of see.
Personally, if it's a big success, uh, in the jail, I would like to see it continue on. If you can't get grant money, I I would like for it to continue on and and keep going. Have that be something that you could offer to the inmates. These guys, these guys are having, guys and women are having a hard time as it is, uh, and they just need some type of support. And that opens the door.
Well, and a lot of this goes back to early intervention in a child's life. And setting them up for success instead of failure.
Exactly, and that's why one of our strategies is early intervention.
Well, what Sheriff Farmer was talking about was treatment for inmates.
Yeah, which is evidence-based treatment, yes.
Inmate treatment process.
Why couldn't they have the same treatment available to them if they're not an inmate with this, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, like, yeah.
Just like he was talking about a clinic, uh, possibly a clinic or a. Place where someone could come in and just volunteer and do it. Sooner you sooner you can get them off of that old stuff, better off they are.
Hopefully before they see Sheriff Farmer.
Maybe that'll cut down on your inmates.
The early intervention's better, then they don't get on any of it.
Well, we would invite anybody to apply for the request for proposal and, again, if y'all are interested in. Being a part of our settlement council or on the steering committee, we would love to have.
We put our contact information in there as well, if you if you have any questions, I have a lot more information to to give if you have questions.
I do have one more question, so we, I know we're talking about the planning process and everything, just like Commissioner Vining's brought up. About Viva Trial Program, just say that's something that you decided to do or that we decided to do. Timeline, you know, from now to then, how long are you looking to say, we, you do. Decide to do some type of a clinic or something, how long are you thinking till you can get that program started?
Well, we're hoping to, you know, so we're looking at these R F Ps, we're hoping to look at them in April. And hopefully come back and talk to you guys in May.
Good deal.
Well, and sometimes the best way is kind of trial and error. We need to get started in something to see what's gonna work and what's not gonna work. Putting it on paper don't always mean.
Exactly, yeah, that's why we we're kind of wanting this process to to move, yeah.
Cuz we've had these funds, I mean, it's been sitting there, how long? Yeah, I remember when we first took office, it was one of the first topics we talked about.
It's two years we could have saved, how many people?
So thank yous for doing what yous are doing.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Moving on now to, um, volunteers for boards and commissions, Mr. King.
So I think we had, um, discussed this, and this is just, you know, getting your your thoughts as far as. Moving forward, uh, we had discussions about, you know, maybe realigning. You know, the boards and commissions to, you know, maybe two times a year as far as appointments, I also have mentioned. That, um, you wanted maybe a process for individuals that wanted to be on some of these boards and commissions, maybe come in and. And have like an an interview process where where kind of the board knows who they're appointing, that sort of thing, um. We can s- we can work through those issues if that's what y'all need to do.
At a minimum, I would like to see them at least come before the board and tell us why they wanna be on that board. What what are their qualifications?
I agree. And I I I think too, you know, we we got a a, an application for a board. Um, today, and it it was just kind of a, I wanna be on one of four. You know, which is their, I I would like for them to have an order so that we know, you know, okay, well, this person wants to be. Definitely on wastewater treatment or twasa or. Hate to say it, waste management. Um, but i- it is a board and people wanna be on it, so.
Makes the process more transparent.
We have had some complaints that it's not been transparent, and a lot of times the public don't see us going to talk to individuals. Because we don't do it here in the meeting, but I think that should be a process that happens, at least partially here in the meeting.
I I can tell you, and it aggravates me, but I've been contacted sometimes. On certain people, and I'm not gonna mention who, uh, that want to be put on board, but. I can't tell you how many that I've voted for, but I've never talked to the person, they've never called me, they've never said why they're qualified. And I feel like if you want to be, you know, reappointed or wanna be appointed to a board, you should be able to come before the board. Or give me a call and say, hey, you know, this is why I'm qualified, and this is why I wanna, you know, be on board, that's just me personally. Uh, but I agree with John on that, we got to have a process set up to where.
It's a little more open and transparent as to who we're picking.
And also these boards that, um. They're recommending people, you know, they're just sending us a piece of paper that's, they're recommending these people. We know some of them, but half of them, we, or more than half, we don't, we've never met them, uh, so. I think if if a board is recommending someone, they they need to come before us and speak.
Well, we'll try to draft some policy and procedure, and then we'll we'll move from that. Is it still a priority to get, you know, kind of the board appointments lined up twice a year and June, December, if we can figure that out?
It helps people know when these board appointments are available and if they wanna serve. I need to get my application in by January to be a. For for whatever board, whenever that date is. So I think it just helps.
Well, we'll draft something and kind of get it back in front of y'all in the the next work session.
And that would be shifting a lot of board appointment times and and things like that, but I think it, in the long run, it's gonna make it a lot easier for. For everyone who wants to serve.
And I think over the years become normalized to, you know, if someone's serving on a board. Uh, that they're automatically re- reappointed, the commissioners would just reappoint them, um. I think, I can't speak for the whole board, but we're a new board. And I I I don't wanna do that, I don't just wanna rubber stamp it, I wanna hear why they're, you know.
Should be the best candidate available, not just because they've been there, that doesn't make them the best candidate for that position on the board.
We'll try to draft something.
At the end of the day, we make that decision. Moving on, library security.
Yeah, uh. I had him add this on here, uh, I think we ran an incident, was it last week, uh, Sheriff Farmer? Um, the, uh. Police were called, they found a, somebody found what they thought was a gun in the restroom at the library. On the floor, uh, when, uh, the deputies got there and examined it, it was an airsoft gun. Wasn't operable, but still that brings the question, could it have been a real gun? What's the dangers if it had been a real gun? Uh, I don't know what kind of signage we had, I'm not saying signage would stop it, but, uh. And then the other issue is the cleaning crew. Uh, they clean some while the library's open, but they clean past the time where the library's open. And they've had some instances where people's come out that had been hiding in the library after the library was closed. Come out on it, and that presents a danger, uh, to the cleaning crew. And I think that opens up the county for lawsuits, especially if they're our employees versus.
And it's suspected that a lot of that is homeless because they are doing hair dye in the sinks. I don't think it's Easter eggs.
We just need to come up, we just need to come up with a plan to make sure that building is secure and that. You know, when the cleaning crew's there by themselves, or even during the day, that that facility is is secure and our. People in the libraries, employees are are safe.
And what we'll reach out to, funding a regional library and get their, um, they should have some, some. Security protocols, even though it's air folks at nighttime, and I will, I'll talk to John about the. Legal standpoint, since we are leasing a city, but it's county, you know, basically, we we maintain it, so. Uh, we'll we'll kind of engage this conversation and, uh, see what we need to do from that standpoint.
Uh, I think, uh, it was mentioned too that those, uh, cleaning crew were kind of hesitant to come forward because of. They were thinking ramifications, they, you know, might be let go if they didn't wanna work for some reason, but. You know how people get, you know, they're just.
Anyone that feel unsafe work.
Yeah, so we need to take care of that.
We'll try to handle that and figure it out.
Okay. Um, moving on to Charles Elder's Highway Resolution.
Yeah, so this is, uh, I think there's, there's been a movement to try to get this done on Highway seventy-four. Uh, at least a certain piece of it, and, um, I think that.
In the flats there at Barker's.
Yeah, at Barker's Creek, so, uh, just wanted to bring this up and and, um. At this point, we don't have a draft resolution, but we we can the next meeting, if that's the the pleasure of the board. Um, to get this passed, it's not up to the commissioners to name a road, but it, but you can offer insight and your. Uh, your thoughts to the State D O T to, in front of the, I think there's a road naming board, so.
And I was talking to Kevin about, and I asked him to add this to the agenda, and, uh. We have some people here, and if it's okay with Chairman, just have one or two of those folks come up and present. Uh, what they have from the state level, is that okay, Mr. Chairman? Danny and, uh.
Michael?
Danny's more abreast of this than I am, but they're, uh, been working with the D O T, uh. Danny's got the numbers, they've reached out to Representative Clampett, Rep- and Senator Corbin. And, um, they've got the contacts, they've got funding.
Well. David Brooks come to us first, went to nine sections of twenty twenty seventy-four. After Charles Elder, he's been rest, hour plus nine of business, our, our four years, he's a two-time commissioner. And done a lot for the community and everything, so. David Brooks, check it out, David Brooks, paperwork, computer and all that stuff. And he has worked hard, months on it, he's had to jump through a lot of loops with the state. And some stuff y'all were supposed to do, he, he'll be back, me can tell you more about that, uh. Went down to to y'all now, now, and. So if you don't want him waiting to be here, he can.
Y'all not get the, uh, tribe as well? Tribe didn't they come on board and and also?
Been doing a lot of behind-the-scenes meeting.
Yes. I'm sorry, make it wait. I'm not much of a speaker, just bear with me. Right here, so we're trying to name the road there on four forty-one. Right on here, so we're trying to name the road there on four forty-one, uh, Highway seventy-four for. The next commissioner, Charles Elders, uh. We have uh sent the paperwork into the state and everything looks good with it, but yet we need a. Uh, the local government to draft a resolution and a copy of the minutes and input.
And tell us what the state told you.
Uh, everything looks good, uh, with the state.
And they they will, if we pass the resolution, it will be re- it will be named after.
Yes, yes. There's uh still a couple more steps that we've already taken care of. It's a letter of recommendation. We already have those.
Have to get on board and and put in their recommendation. I heard that they did.
What's that?
Tribe.
Uh, they haven't yet, uh.
I thought y'all were, you're talking to the tribe, so.
Yeah, well, I have contacted a couple with the tribe, but uh, uh, we haven't got a recommendation letter. But we, you need three recommendation letters. We already have more than that. Uh, the tribe would be a good one if they come through, but I don't see why they would have any problems.
As long as we don't need it, that's fine, but if if we do, then maybe we can do a little pronging there as well.
Yeah, but uh. The re- we need the resolution from the county. Uh, y'all probably done this more than, I'm just trying to win through this, but uh. They're still sending the letters in, the fa- the family has to send letters in. Uh, uh, there's a two thousand dollar fee for the signs. I've talked to the state about that. Uh, they told me that most of the time the county might pay for it. We were here. We we have the funding for it, but we're we're talking at a three-term.
Commissioner, yeah. They've done a lot for the county.
Yeah, he did and and I don't know if you saw it last meeting.
Yes, yeah. Yeah.
Even center after him as well, so. We're fully in support of it.
Yeah.
I think the confusion and what took, you know, us to. Get to a resolution is that we were under, you know, we understand that the state requires the person to have passed away. Uh, but you're saying that.
What I've heard from the state is if it passes away before we get this. All the paperwork in, that we have to wait a year before you can name the road after him. Uh, Charles is held. Yep, we.
I talk to Wayne all the time.
Uh, it it's, it would just be a good way to honor him, uh. You know, he's he's a, he's a role model for a lot of men out there in Koala and most of them know him probably better than I do. I've known him for over thirty years.
They'll allow, what'd you say, two mile section there?
That's true, I think. It is pretty close to a two mile section.
What we had talked about this morning is from uh, from his house or near his house and that curve. Down to the uh substation, the fire department, pretty much the straightaway right there near his house.
Yeah, that that's one of the next steps we go after we get the resolution and all the paperwork in. Uh, there's a uh grind staff we get with to uh do the exact location. But we'll go out through there somewhere.
And the resolution, Mr. King, would we mention location?
You can or you cannot? I mean, as long as you get in there, kind of the parameters on on why he would. You know, why he qualifies, basically is what they're asking for. And I think that the the local government signifying that that you are in favor of that, that's really all they're after. I don't think they're after the.
How long would it take us to draft that resolution?
Yeah, we'll draft one.
I said, how long will it?
Oh, we'll have it for the next meeting.
Next week, that's what I was asking.
Well, I would. Like to recommend that we put it on the agenda and I would also like to. If it's all right with the board for the county to take care of the two thousand dollars. He's done a lot for the county and served the county in many different ways and.
And not just this county, he served in Haywood County and Swain, so different capacities, but he he did a lot of things.
He was big with mountain projects, hit mountain projects a lot. Spent a lot for the whole area, much less the Koala bounty.
He was the definition of a public servant.
Yep.
That good with everybody?
Yeah, I think there's consensus.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, moving on to other business. Um, we do have a need to go into closed session in our work session. So is there a motion to go into closed session?
So many.
Oh, the closed session is for real property and legal. All in favor? None opposed, we are in closed session.
Close session, there was no action taken with no further business, there are motion to adjourn.
Seven.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Little favor, your adjourn.
Aye.
One more.
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 Aye.